Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 3, 2023 Bruce Township Planning Commission meeting. Our meeting start time is section number two. Dana, would you please call the roll? Here.
Cupids.
Here.
Hegelstein.
Here.
Kent.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Barnett.
Here.
Chumby.
Here shortly.
Be here in a minute.
Okay, we have a forum. Before we start the business part of our meeting, I'm going to ask that everyone rise for the third. For those who might be here for the first time and some who have not been here in a while, this is a public business meeting of the planning commission for Bruce Township. And we do welcome public comments at various points in the agenda. We request that you sign in if you haven't done so already. I think everyone has. And that gives us an opportunity to know who is here and we need to follow up back with you. We have your phone number, etc. The commission is made up of seven Bruce Township citizens appointed by the board. All are here except for our trustee. He'll be back here shortly to get a meeting just prior to this. In addition, we have a township employee, Dana Kanon, to my left, to assist us with recording what happens here in the meeting minutes. She participates in our meeting from time to time as well in her current role. And also as a former planning commissioner, she has some of the historical perspective of things in the past. We also have Joe Tan Gary to my right. He's a professional planner with Giffords Webster as an advisor to us as we do our work. The opportunity is on our agenda for public questions and comments. And generally, we ask you to keep that to about three minutes. In a situation where one speaker will represent multiple people, which doesn't appear to be the case tonight, but when that happens, we extend the time to about five minutes, for our proper time. When you get up, we ask that you give, excuse me, your name and address. And then you can speak on the topic that you wish to address with us. We do that all. It will make the best use of our time and yours. We will be here through the entire agenda of 14 different items, sections. Okay, to the commissioners, I think we can approve the agenda without the other member here, the trustee. I would make the motion to approve that unless...
Put the minutes first.
That's all right. Thank you.
I jumped the comment too. The agenda, we do have one thing.
One change.
Yes.
And that's the one deletion.
Yes.
So we have the minutes of the last meeting everyone should have. Mike usually has a change over two, so forward on back to... So with everyone's permission, I'm going to bypass that until Mike gets back. Okay, so now we're on the section number, item number six, public comments. So this could be any issue that you care to raise with us, whether it's on the agenda or not. If you have an item on the agenda, they'll all be passed to you and saved for that time. So is there anyone who has general comments or questions for us? Okay. Okay. And relative to the agenda, I don't know if we actually took a vote on the agenda, but item number seven A, the meeting was, or the question is canceled by the petitioner until a future date. So item seven A is off the table for today. Rest of the agenda, anyone have any changes to make? If not, I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended on the item seven A.
I'll second.
Let's do the motion. Chapman seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving along pretty quick. So we would be on seven B. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
To approach the podium. Again, give us your name even though we had some conversation, phone number for the video and...
Chris Jones, 8201 Pine Mill Drive, and phone number is 248-613-2073.
So if you would explain your project, what you would like to do?
Oh, I would like to build a three-car garage in my side yard of my lot. My lot, my house is set back very far on my lot. There's not a whole lot of backyard. And what little backyard I do have, one side, there's a giant tree. And then the other side is the low spot on my lot, you know, where all the water drains. So I wouldn't want to build a garage in that spot. So it's the, the garage is going to be for personal use, lawn equipment, automobiles, maintenance and equipment, stuff like that.
Okay. Turn it over to Joe to give us your background and what you're doing about it.
So, right, so this is on the north side of Pine Mill Drive, and it's about two and a half acres. The proposed building is 1,575 square feet. That's in line with the 1,700 square foot limit for accessory buildings on a lot that size. The, it's partly in the front yard and partly in the side yard, a little bit of it does come before the plan of the building, so that's the front yard portion. It's R1A zone. So we have a few setback standards. Accessory buildings have to be set back a minimum of 12 feet from another building. They have a 74-foot distance shown here. In the R1A district, accessory buildings have to be set back a minimum of 10 feet from a side or rear lot line. We set back 25 feet from the side lot line. It's 118 feet from the rear lot line and 171 feet from the front lot line. Of course, the house is between the other lot line, it's 200 something feet from there. Two accessory buildings are permitted on a lot this size. This is going to be the first accessory building on the lot. Accessory buildings generally are supposed to be located in the rear yard. Those buildings, as I said, partially in the front yard and partially in the side yard. The maximum height for an accessory building over 850 square feet is 29 feet. This is 20.5 feet to the peak of the roof. And we have our standards for special land use approval for accessory buildings. One is that there's proportionality between the size of the lot, the street furniture, and the size of the accessory structure. Two is that the accessory structure is in harmony with the principal structure, the environment, the pottery, and the surrounding properties. Three is that the materials and colors of the proposed accessory building match or complement a principal building. Four is that an accessory building permitted in the side yard does not exceed the ground floor area of the principal building. And accessory buildings greater than 850 square feet do require a declaration of zoning compliance before the issuance of a building permit. The, my note here about the applicant not providing images, there were some images provided that I just didn't make their way to me, so those who have been provided to you, there's some shots of the property, the house that's currently there, and topographical map, aerial, and then a bunch of photos taken from standing where the building would be. So one toward the house, one looking north, one looking south, one looking east, and a couple other directions as well. Brief written explanation from the applicant of what he's trying to accomplish here. So this does require special land use approval because it's located in the front side yard. As a special land use, the planning commission makes the recommendation to township board, which issues the final approval or denial.
Have you questions? Question, Joe?
The similarity of building materials from the home to the proposed building?
Yeah, I'm planning on matching.
Matching color?
Color and brick.
And brick?
Yeah. Yeah, the house has a lot of brick on it.
How much brick will the building have?
Two sides, the north and the east, excuse me, west side. Side that faces my house and the side that faces the road.
What alternate materials do you plan to use on the other elevations?
Just a siding, probably a vinyl siding that matches in color to the house.
You got vinyl siding on the house right now, like for gable ends?
No, it's actually roughs on cedar. It's been painted. But it's a pretty common color. It's Cape Cod gray, so.
Are there homes on the other side of here that are able to view the side of your lot? I drove by there. I don't think there is.
Yeah, it's, my neighbors across the street from me would see it more than anybody else on the street. And I've gotten approval from them and approval from my next-door neighbor. So.
Which two sides of brick again?
The side facing the road and the side facing my house, which would be the south and the west side.
And it'll be all the way up, or is it just a certain level and then siding?
It's, it's up to the, up to the gutters. And there'll be some, that'd be siding above that. The siding on the gable ends goes with the angle of the, of the roof.
You're planning to do a shingle roof also to master houses?
Correct. Yeah, the roof on the house is pretty new, so we'll be able to match that easily.
And what's the reason that you can't put it in the rear yard yet?
There's a giant tree. It's probably 80, at least 80 feet high and about three foot around on the bottom. I took a picture and sent it in. I've got...
Do you know how many feet the building comes into the front yard?
Was that Manny? I didn't hear you.
Oh, it's probably like six feet. It's not a whole lot.
Roughly, yes.
Yeah. My neighbor across the street has a similar situation where there's, yeah. Yeah.
And how far is the back of the building to that tree?
Um, 50 to 60 feet.
Joe, your opinion is mostly a side yard?
Most of it's in the side yard, a little bit of it posted in the front yard. It's close, about six feet to the front yard.
Are you building the garage or do you have a contractor?
I'm working with a contractor. Yeah.
You can't put it in the rear yard because there's not enough room for a driveway to go between the house and the tree, or what is the reason?
Well, the tree, we didn't want to have to cut down the tree. It's so huge. It's, and we wanted to try and preserve the, the natural beauty of the backyard.
There's a bit of grade change at the back of the house.
Yeah, I have a walkout basement.
So that requires some earth moving to put it back there?
Yeah, if I was to put it back there, yeah. I'm essentially putting it on the high spot in my lot, so I won't have any, you know, issues with drainage.
There's an aerial with Tobo in the end of the letter. It's hard to see the lines on it, though. The county map has these brown lines and images are mostly green. So this ground kind of goes into the green, but you can kind of see where the, at the back, there's two older retaining walls at the back of the house.
So in some of these pictures, there's a stake. Is that...
That's kind of my, I just staked it out so I could see where I was planning on putting it. They're close, they're not completely accurate.
It looks like there's a ridge that runs through there. Are you going to have to deal with that?
I'm not going to have to change anything, I don't think, because it's pretty flat where we're putting it.
From this one, one picture, it looks like the front of the building is going to be completely equal with the front of your garage.
Yes.
Of the same depth.
Just giving everybody a chance to look through. Back up one more time.
I've got a question for the applicant. You know, by what was submitted, it appeared to me, not knowing any better, that it was going to be brick and wood siding all the way around. So for your comments just made, that your proposal calls for doing, be vinyl or...
Vinyl or wood, whatever I can, you know, whatever makes the most sense.
Would you be willing to consider doing a four-foot brick skirt on the other elevations?
Yeah, that's possible.
Is there purpose for asking for aesthetics or something? Aesthetics and also, you know, our requirement says for special land use. Let me see here. Materials and colors of the proposed accessory building match or complement a principal building. So, you know, two elevations, as the applicant has explained, you know, he would be in compliance with that because your house is brick at least eight feet up, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's portions on the back that are just siding.
Okay.
Like around the deck area. And the gable ends are just siding too. The, the brick stops at the gutter height.
I just think by doing so, it more closely meets the requirement.
Seeking any other questions?
So if you put that skirting, the four-foot skirting around the other two sides, would anybody be able to see it?
Not really. It's, it backs up to the woods and then there's, you know, a tree line before the next neighborhood, which is, I believe, that Hawthorne Ridge neighborhood, which is a newer sub. So, yeah, it's not going to be seen by very many people.
I remember right, there's a turnaround at the top of the road.
Uh, yeah, it widens out a little bit. I wouldn't really call it a turnaround, but...
It's not a full cul-de-sac, yeah.
Yeah. Not many people go up our road. It's just the residents, pretty much.
Motion to the higher direction. Joe, we make a recommendation. Will you approve it?
We are making a recommendation to the township board.
Okay. I will make a recommendation, or my motion is that the planning commission make a recommendation to the board to approve with following conditions. That the building will be grepped up to the gutters on the sides facing the house and the side facing the road. Number two, that the vinyl and/or wood siding on the other two sides matches the color of the primary structure of the house.
Yep.
As well as the shingles match the colors of the building and the house.
Yep.
Motion by Chumby, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dana. Dana, would you call the roll?
We're through the discussion. We've heard the discussion.
You call the roll, please.
Barnett?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Hegelstein?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Chumby?
Yes. Motion carries. We have our supporting move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Continue your work through the meeting.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, the board meeting, board meeting is two weeks from today.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sir, board meeting is in two weeks. That's where you would get their review and the final approval.
In two weeks, okay.
And six.
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk with you about that.
At 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. Okay. Six P M. Okay.
These are these items.
Oh, you did. You guys are very kind.
Well, now you have some suggestions.
You know me too well.
So we called all that actually.
But I did it earlier. Whenever you want to do it. So we're going to go ahead and interject prior item that we had passed on, uh, item four, approval in minutes to give like the option.
Okay. Um, I don't know if any of these were addressed by anybody or no.
We just get.
Okay. Page two, uh, towards the top, Andrew Harlow, seven oh four two four K wrote, rezoning request work group. I don't, I don't think we needed a work, work, worker. And then about halfway down, um, where it says the applicant was advised to return with a contractual rezone, I think that should say rezoning proposal in met. And then on page three, the Greece Pavilion. The last sentence where it says specific city, it starts with specific. Do you see that?
Mm-hmm.
At the end of that, or after the word scale, I should, should say will, insert the word will, and then updated by the applicant. And submitted to the township. And did we get that?
No, I haven't.
Can you please contact Grace? Because we need that in the record.
I hadn't finished reading. Updated by the applicant.
And submitted to the township. Remember we talked about that, updating the site plan? And then on page four at the top, number three, the planning commission believes that the materials, I would insert the word materially, meets our material standards. I know there's a lot of material on there.
Say it one more time.
Uh, insert the word material after materials. On the last line.
Planning commission believes that the.
Materials.
Materiality meets our materials.
And. And then the, uh, further down on that page toward where it says motion by Tremblay, seconded by Cupids on the Queen's Land Estates.
Yeah.
I would insert the word or the number one between plan and waving on the second line. And then rather than T W O on the third line on the bottom, just use the number two because that's the second condition. Page five at the top, third line. Instead of our requirements, say the township requirements. And instead of or, say and standards. And the same change, fifth line down, core unit number nine. Fifth line down, which says our requirements or standards make that township requirements and standards.
So, so in a motion, I have a question. So in a motion, I can, I can do that. I can change if the motion is exactly worded.
This is to add clarity to the motion because it's become permanent.
Okay. So, so can I do that just to interject or turn it to, instead of our, put the township
Because we're bringing them. That's right here.
Right. Yeah, I think it's.
So I shouldn't do that on my own?
If you want to put down verbatim, I mean, it's up to you.
I think, yeah, I think you were putting it down verbatim. You know, make or the motion said our. But the meaning of our was the township. I think you can feel free to clarify like that. I think, I think that's, that's okay.
And then page six, comments from commissioners. Um, we talked about time limits on site plans, preliminary site condos. Did we get an answer to that?
Yeah, I have a, a thing there for you at your spot that I left, um, somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
I highlighted the part of the minutes that where you asked that question. I did reach out to Christine Anderson. I even heard back from her. She usually gets back to me right away. But I did look in the organs and that's what's attached there to be what I found in her organs.
So I'm going to read this to you, Joe.
Okay.
This is in section six, one, E, four. It says a site plan approval should be valid for one year after they approve. Does that approve? Does that apply to preliminary site plan approval on site plan and residential?
I would say that in the absence of a, um, separate standard for those, it likely would because that would be the only standard you'd have to be on.
And that's attached. The site condo is, is in extra pages and it does not state.
It does not say the timeframe. It does not. So then this word apply.
I would think it probably would. I would defer to the attorney.
When I hear back from her, I expect to.
Yeah. So if you hear from Christine, then there's a timeline. We need to notify the, the property.
I'm not there.
Their preliminary site plan is no longer valid.
Right. It seems if you took it to be no time limit, the other person would come back fifteen or sixteen years later with an entirely new planning commission and board and staff and.
Yep.
It, it seems like there has to be some sort of limit. So the only limit we have to refer to is one year.
Getting them done. Make the motions purely minutes, that's what I did.
Now, second motion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
No.
Dana, when you're done writing, I'll. Sure?
Yep.
Move on to item seven, B. Mr. Jones.
No.
I accept you. What's your name, address, and explain what you would like to do?
Absolutely. So, good evening. My name is Daniel Schick, four eight zero one thirty-two mile. This is my wife, Rachel, and our kids. Um, so we purchased our home one year ago, April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, Rachel spent the first eight years of her career as a Romeo teacher, first at Washington and then at Amanda Moore, which made us fall in love with this community and why we moved here. So yes, we are implants. Um, but we love it here and we're excited to raise our family here. Um, I guess I want to chime in not because about like credibility or credentials or anything, but I've been the broker owner of Real Team Real Estate for the last seven and a half years and a full-time Realtor for the last fourteen years since I graduated from Central Michigan University. I only mention it because like to set the stage of my entire career is built on relationships with my clients and helping the community list and sell their homes. And my entire hobby is helping make old tire homes look beautiful on the inside and out, top to bottom. I personally flipped well over fifty homes, not my clients or investors, but just like myself and my wife and a couple of business partners. Um, again, I say it just because like we care about the quality integrity piece and putting a quality product on the market. And this time around, it's our own home. We sold a home that we loved and bought a house that was very, very tired and it's still on the upswing. So again, I get the integrity piece of the community and putting a quality accessory building up and the importance of that. It's the only reason I mentioned that part. Um, every time we list a house, it sells within a couple of days and we always get multiple offers because we care about that piece. So I really just want to set that, that I have no intentions on putting up a subpar product, not looking to cut corners or put up inferior facade products. It's our family home. Uh, we want to create the best environment possible for our kids while keeping that nineteen seventy-five charm that the house was built. Um, Rachel, I don't know if you want to chime in on any of that, but, um, just now I want to jump into why I'm here tonight. Um, I've been working directly with Dana since mid-January in preparation for this moment and I have nothing but praise for her, um, since day one. So thank you for dealing with me. Seriously. Um, I've asked her a million questions on so many different levels and she's a huge asset to our new community, your all existing community. So let's dive in. I just wanted to set a quick stage on why I'm standing here. Practical difficulties. I've got a whole slew of them on why I'm requesting a special land use. Um, I'll just run through them all. I'm sure questions may pop up and I'm prepared to answer any and all questions and hopefully we can all be on the same page. First off, um, our septic system location in the backyard, it is in the packet. I was required to get a septic inspection, county approval. As I'm sure you all know, when we purchased the property, I included their sketch in there when we got that county approval. It's located in the east backyard as well as this reserve, the septic reserve area. It's right back there. It's also on that sketch in the backyard. We have a wetland area back there. To me, it looks like a crater from a meteor that fell out of the sky and created a massive hole in the ground. I mean, I don't know how else to describe that thing, but it's significant. Um, I know we had a guest drive by today. I'm sure you saw it. Um, the natural runoff of the property flows down into the wetlands. So it flows from east to west in our backyard. So if we were to attempt to go on the western portion of the backyard, it would significantly impact our runoff of water and I don't know how that would work. Um, we also have just steep slopes going down into our backyard, um, on the western portion of our backyard. So I don't know how I would get an equipment in and out of there, trailers in and out of there, especially in the wintertime. Um, I added this one, even though I know I could get around it, but I'd have a lot of trees that would have to come down if that's considered a practical difficulty. But again, I know I could get around that one. The other ones, I couldn't get around. Um, significant change to my grading would have to happen and I have serious water concerns if we had to do that. Uh, setback requirements from the side lot line and from the main structure would not work with the plans that I submitted and for the accessory building that we're looking to put up. We also have utility feeds that would be an issue, um, on the west, excuse me, eastern portion of the lot. Um, so proactively on October twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-two, I did plant or have my landscaper plant twelve seven-foot Norway spruce trees. Honestly, we did it for us because we want to create our own privacy screen. Um, they're called seven foot. I measured them. They're all at least eight feet. Many of them are at least nine feet. Um, I have twenty-eight of them on the way right now. They're supposed to be here already, but the P just got three feet of snow. So I think it slowed it down a little bit. But again, I have twenty-eight more on the way. So we're immediately going to have, um, a privacy screen that's going to be growing at a foot to two foot every single year, starting now. Um, so there'll be forty trees in. They're mature. They're growing. And we did an upfront investment, again, mostly because we wanted to do that, but I just hope that shows our commitment to improving and just doing the right thing here. Zoning confirmation, confirmation, excuse me. Um, so I know Joe had a question in his planning review, which thank you for getting that over so I could take a look at it. Um, ten-foot setback requirements from the side lot line will be at least twelve feet. You know, if, if I have to go more, I will because we do have the space. Um, that's not our issue. The issue is where that steep drop-off comes into play and that is just not buildable area. There's no way to make that buildable. The accessory building is going to be about three hundred and thirty feet from thirty-two mile. And there are currently four accessory buildings within plain sight right now that are all way closer to thirty-two mile. Two of them should come down because they're struggling. Um, facade. They're not brick, I guess. Let's just put them that way. Um, there's a brand new one across the street at Big Red, which is directly across the street from our home. It is a full metal accessory building. Um, looks great, but I don't have neighbors across the street. I have an orchard. We barely have neighbors at all. Um, and once this, you know, everything grows in, which it's starting to do, I won't really be able to see anybody. Um, other than one neighbor who's all in and said, I'll, you do whatever you want. You guys are doing a great job making your home, your ugly home look nice and you're taking care of it. No one's done that in a long time. Uh, the proposed location of the accessory building is a natural ending to our existing driveway and really the perfect location to tie our property together without impeding any of our neighbors. Our ultimate goal is to tie the facade of our accessory building into the look of our home. We're still improving the look of our home, so we have to hash out a few details with color, trim, fixtures, lighting, et cetera. But our attention to detail is top priority. Dana, I'm sure you'll back me on that one. That attention to detail is not something we're trying to just like slide under the rug here. Um, the accessory building will look like it's supposed to be there once it's all complete. I promise you that. I get my word means nothing at this point, but we're here to do it right and hopefully we can work together and come to a compromise on the facade side of things. Um, I want to throw this one out there. I've always hated the look of junk yards and people's front yard. I'm kind of that guy right now because I have a tent over there to hold my stuff because I have nowhere to put my stuff. A two-car garage doesn't cut it when I have a family. Um, so I have a temporary tent holding stuff and my overflow is all where I want to put my accessory building. So again, we're going all out to completely manicure this place and just hoping I can get your blessing to proceed with our plan. Um, Orchard Construction is our builder that we've hired. They're currently putting up two accessory buildings in Bruce Township as we speak. Um, Steve was going to try and come, but his dad's birthday is tonight. It's the only reason he's not here. I hired who I thought is the best person for the job, did not go cheap, did not hire my friends that are builders, hired somebody who specializes in this arena. So we can put up a quality building that's going to last and we can enjoy it for as long as we're able to live here. So I have, thanks for your time and for your consideration. Sorry for the long explanation.
I wasn't timing yours. You did well.
Thank you.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I don't have a neighborhood. So that's what's different for all of us. We came from a neighborhood. There's no neighborhood there where it's , uh, pretty isolated. So, yeah, thank you though.
I did a drive-by when I parked across the street.
Oh, thank you.
Unannounced. So what is the, uh, what kind of siding or?
So, I mean, I put it in there. I mean, I prefer to do a metal building and not have it. I don't want it to look like a Menards kit. It's not what we're doing. It says a custom build, but I prefer to go metal, completely tying into what we have right now. Our current home is brick and original nineteen seventy-five aluminum siding. I don't want to go with that type of siding. You know, I prefer to go metal if we're able to. Um, going in, I expect that is going to be probably our greatest friction point. So I understand. I'm just hoping there's a way we can figure out a way to compromise and agree on something that we all think would help our. that we all think would help our community and values and all that. Again, I'm not trying to hurt the value side of things. I bought the home after it had already been painted. It was kind of like a puke yellow before they painted it white. There's no one doing that. It's painted. I really don't want to go put up white brick. I'd rather tie in, you know, we have black fixtures on the house, it's white and we have like a light greenish gray, like doors and stuff. My wife's good at all that, not me, but we want to just tie it all together, like again, like it's just supposed to be there, so.
The trees that you mentioned.
In the backyard?
The 40 trees that you.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, just to clarify. I thought you were going into like the practical difficulty side of the trees, not the new trees, so I'm good, okay.
Where are those like old within a specific areas? Like is it meant to block this?
That's exactly, it's meant to block 32-mile. So it's not right, yes, Mandy's got them. So I couldn't put them much closer to the road because there's mature trees that are huge in front of it. I didn't want to stunt their growth and I'm, so I'm staggering them. Right now, there's one row. I'm going closer to 32-mile with the next ones. Again, there's only 12 up. 28 more are going to massively change the game right away.
So that's all intended to be in the front yard?
All of it intended to be in the front yard. So, sorry, I didn't put that on here, but I did put in a response back to Dana. Once this is all in, I fully intend on adding more landscaping around this to just tie it all in together. Again, like it's, like I didn't just put it up, like it's been there and there will be landscaping. I'll put as many trees up as I have to. I don't think they had ever trimmed the trees there. Everything was very overgrown, there's a lot of dead. So kind of had to pull back some in order to get, you know, basically to start over on a lot of stuff there.
Yeah. I don't really get from this picture. Where did you want the barn to be?
So one of them's in there and I haven't highlighted. I don't know what picture you see, but in my packet, I did highlight exactly where the accessory building proposal is.
Oh, I think it's.
I'm assuming on the side.
Yeah.
I can't tell.
South of the pond-ish thing.
So they wait.
Yeah. It holds water and there's ducks. I don't know what you want to call it. It is on the west, it's west of the home.
So where there's a bend in the driveway, there's like a little island in the driveway.
Exactly. So if you can, if you extend off the driveway, you'd run right into it, which is the intention.
It's like right there.
Dan, you want to do it on an angle?
I want to, no, I want to do parallel to 32-mile and the house, so no angle. My beautiful tent that's up is not square. I know that.
Yeah, I couldn't tell by the picture.
So is this from the side yard or the front yard?
It's front. It's, it's ahead of the house.
Front by necessity, not choice. Like if I could scoot it back, I would, but it immediately, basically, I want to go as close to, as close as I can, and that's where I have to lean on Steve, as close as we can before it starts to fall off into the hole. Roughly, again, I use Onyx Hunt for a lot of my rough measurements, roughly 330 feet from 32-mile.
And your house is set back how far between the front door?
A little more, so probably 375 from my front door.
There's also a little band at the bottom, or what is the band at the bottom?
That in that drawing is metal. I'm flex, I am flexible on that side of things on exactly what we do there. Again, I would prefer metal. Brick would be my lowest choice. I'm just curious, you know, if there's an alternate material that's going to be required outside of metal, I'm curious what options would be entertained if it has to go down that route, but my strong preference would be to be metal. And again, have it all, you know, doors, lighting, everything else complementing what we have up currently on the home.
Doors they face to the east?
They face to the east, so yeah, they'll face our two-car attached garage. And I want those to match. What's up right now?
As far as the size, it says 16-foot tall. Is it the sidewall height or total height?
Well, they're 14-foot doors, so 16 sidewall.
Okay.
I didn't want to restrict our future dream plans with height, so that's a reasoning for 14, 14-foot doors.
And again, 16-foot sidewall, Dan?
Yes.
So that's not the total height then? So the total height would be higher than that then?
Was still staying within, what is it, 26? Sorry, I didn't have that, I don't have that in front of me right now. 29.
Yeah, with the.
Staying within.
23 feet.
Oh, you did manage. 23 to the peak, yeah.
And the heights measure.
Close to.
Structure on top.
The heights measure to the midpoint between the.
I'm not sold on putting those on top either. If they're there, cool. If they're not, that's to me not, not even an important factor at all. The 14-foot doors are most important to me.
So 19 and a half feet is the ordinance space.
So you're 330 feet, can you repeat that?
19 and a half feet is what the height would be based on the way our ordinance measures between the peak and the.
This is 330 feet from, how far from the primary structure will it be?
I'm so glad you asked because I actually just did that. I think it was 105 from my garage door, which is the closest point. 35.4 yards, 35 times 3, 70 plus 35, 105.
And that still gives you within the easement restriction?
Yes.
Joe, do you agree with that?
What's that?
Just 105 feet from the garage to the west. Can you, the size of the building is still within the easement restriction?
He's been, I don't know, on the side yard. Oh, in terms of the side, side yard setback, well, he's going to have to meet the side yard setback, so he's 10, 10 feet, so if that puts him a little closer to the line than that, then he would need to pull over.
Yeah, I will not ask for a variance on that setback, on that side lot setback because again, I don't want to impede or go there.
Did you say earlier that the side setback was intended to be 12 feet?
I just said minimum, just say, just to clarify that I'm not, I won't come close. I'll go further off if I have to. In that email, I believe I put 12 to 15.
And the document says a minimum of 12.
Yeah.
I guess you couldn't.
A lot of it's been addressed. I'll just address a couple of things here. So just wanted to note that this is a little more than 10 acres and the maximum size for an accessory building on 10 to 15 acres is 3,270 square feet and what's proposed is 2,400, so it falls within that, so there's no special land use request for size. It's also the only accessory building and you can have up to three, so there's not a special land use request for number of structures either, or it's strictly for the location in the front yard. Otherwise, I'm just trying to look for things that haven't been addressed yet. And it's pretty much, everything else has been talked about, I have flagged, so. Matter of satisfaction with those answers and whether or not you want any other additional supplemental information. No red flags at this point, I mean, you saw. I mean, other than what you stated. Yeah, other than what I have already.
Again, facade-wise, I'd be happy to, once it's up and all everything's graded, I'd be happy to throw in more trees right off the bat to just continue to help all of us.
You have a large lot, so there's absolutely nowhere in the back, the north, to put a building?
Can't get back there.
Because it's wet?
Because the, no, because of the septic. So I'll be driving over the septic system to get back there. And on the other side, I can't, so if the septic wasn't there, it could be done, but again, it's there, so I can't undo that. But even if it wasn't there, that's where I have the grading issue and the natural runoff issue and I just couldn't and wouldn't. That's just so risky to me on how that would play out, so.
I've done it to property and it really does drop off. Or I agree with Dan that.
Thank you.
It's not practical to do it there. I mean, you could do it, but I mean, you'd have to bring in a lot of grade and, and you know, I don't think it would be aesthetically pleasing to even do it on the east side, rear yard, can't do it because of the septic.
For sure. Thank you.
Wait a minute, we still have, we're at the point now where discussing with the applicant. Could we move to discussion between commissioners next, correct?
Dan, I thought you were doing that here.
I didn't know we had migrated to that point. Okay, we are at that point?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Anybody else want to go first or?
Okay.
So I've been involved with planning commission for a little over two years, so much of what we deal with here, Dan, is special land uses for accessory buildings.
Sure.
People move out, you know, these are large lots and, you know, you've been to my house, I've been to yours.
For sure.
You know, like out of a building as well. And so, but we did put a lot of effort into rewriting the ordinances for accessory buildings and detached garages because at that point, things were approaching being out of control. And so one of the things we tried to hold to is that requirement that for special land uses, which most of them that we would see are in side yard, let alone yours is front, and you have no choice, I agree with that.
For sure.
And, but we tried to hold the requirement for the materials to be matching or complementary. And I've built as well as you have and to do conventional construction, brick, whatever, it's a more expensive cost of construction than doing a whole barn. But you know, what you're proposing to do is a 40 by 60 building, which is a big building and you're on a very visible 32-mile road and we need to be careful as a board, what we do regarding setting precedent, because what we allow for you, it's going to be potentially the new standard for other people with similar hardships to come and be able to make the same claim, so. I recognize your needs and I think done more so than a whole building, with what alternative means, alternative means are available, to more closely match your building would potentially be more acceptable by the sport. I can't speak for everybody, I'm just kind of giving you, based on past experience, what the flavor could be. In response to your comments, the other buildings you mentioned too in the area, those likely were built prior to this makeup being in existence.
Sure, with the exception of the brand-new one, but it's not even in our township, so it's probably not mentioned and it's on an orchard.
Yeah.
Right? So we can pull that off the table?
I have been involved with Washington Township recently.
Because that one, I could throw a rocket from the road.
Yeah.
Right, I know, I get it. We can pull it off the table, I'm just saying. Not from here.
They are not a straight R1.
I understand.
They're what they call residential agriculture.
Sure.
Allow agro tourism, if I got that terminology correct, so they can run the apple orchard there, so it allows them additional flexibility.
For sure. It's apples to oranges, I get it.
So, so that, and then the other buildings, they were likely put up before these people had any opportunity to put any influence in. We take this very seriously and we try to be fair with the applicants and also being fair with everybody in the community. So what else do I have? Down here precedent, Washington, prior structures, that kind of sums it up. You made some comments, Dan, about potentially considering, you know, alternate construction means, you know, I, first I'd be receptive to hearing to what degree of flexibility you may be willing to consider and you were unsure of currently what your options are. I would be in support of allowing you to another month to come back in with.
It's not unsure, it's more what, you know, what would be, what my options would be. Again, there's a lot of metal on my house right now. There's a lot of white metal on my house. I'm suggesting putting up a lot of white metal on the accessory building, so. The brick side of things, I can, I can do brick if there, if it's an absolute requirement. I don't want to, I don't think it's going to look the best. I don't think it's the best overall option to tie it in in 2023, but I'm open to conversation with the board as a whole.
What's your house today?
What do you mean?
Construction material of your house?
It's brick. It's brick and aluminum siding.
Brick up to certain point?
Yeah, I mean, it's different spots, you know, the back of my house is probably eight feet up and then it's all siding up the back. We are in a walkout, so there's a ton of siding back there. The front, I mean, there's siding all over the house. It's a lot of brick. It's a lot of brick. But there is siding there too. There's siding. Do you have a picture of the house?
Yeah.
In the packet that I submitted?
Yeah. Is the elevation facing 32 is predominantly correct? Permitted uses for, what is, oh, excuse me, I'm being real breaking, Joe, Mike. Permitted uses for old construction buildings, metal siding, metal roof, if they're in the rear yard, meeting the other requirements that Joe touched on, you wouldn't even need to come into this planning commission. It would be a permitted use.
Understood.
But, you know, when we start getting forward of the rear most elevation of the house, then, you know, it falls under SLU and we're just trying to keep the puppies in the box because, Dan, what starts here could proliferate greatly throughout the township. That's, that's the big issue.
Sure.
What's material on your attached garage?
What's material on your attached garage?
Brick and siding.
How high up is the brick?
Um, yeah, pretty much up to, you know, where the soffit area comes into play.
So on the building, you're proposing all metal and it looks like the bottom portion is just a different color potentially?
Yeah, again, with some flex, I guess, if required. Again, I'm not trying, I didn't go with the cheap, I'm not going with the, you know what I'm saying?
If I recall correctly, it was Jared and Rick who predominantly worked on this accessory building, the side and front yard requirements, correct?
Yeah. Jared was U I and who was the third one? Joe.
Okay. So I would look to you guys, I'm looking at materials and colors. I mean, I buy that your hardship of putting it in the front yard.
For sure.
Question that you justify that very adequately. The thing I'm struggling with is the materials and colors to be quite frank.
Understood and expected. I guess, what would be required? I am, well, I'm just trying to be proactive. I'm just curious if, you know, what the opinion is as a whole from the commissioners. You know, I've known Rick's opinion now for months. I'm just curious what everyone else's thoughts were.
Yeah, I'm torn. I mean, I think this picture looks like a nice building. I don't have any issues particularly with that. And I just, I guess what I'm struggling with is, I understand we wanted to match or complement and the existing house built in the 70s. What is, so what exactly does that mean? Is it brick and vinyl or brick and aluminum siding? I think that would be impractical in today's sense to require we put aluminum siding on. Is it, it's a white house? Does it have to have, you know, superlative to be white with some matching component? It's like, to me, it's a, comes down to require a brick or not.
What do you think? You and Rick had the biggest invested interest and spent more time on this than any of us.
I think there's a corollary question there is if you require a brick to what extent?
Right. If we require it and how much?
The requirement of brick would change the construction because you have to put 42 inch footings in to have a support for the brick instead of the 24 inch front wall. So then it gets into like normal construction instead of whole, whole construction.
All right, so my perspective, I don't feel strongly that you need brick, but that's just my one opinion.
What material would you advise?
Again, I think the look of this is a, to me, given how it's proposed in this drawing, I feel like it's a well-designed metal building. I understand it's a metal building and that's maybe not as ideal as we would like. So I, to me, the metal is okay.
Because the requirement says the materials and colors of the process or buildings match or complements.
Yeah.
So if you, if you're of the opinion that white metal complements the primaries, principal building, and you were, you were one of the primary authors of this that I could ever spend it, what do you think, Rick?
I'm going to disagree with that all day long. So I get it, I were Dan, I empathize with the situation, what he wants to do, but again, I'm just so concerned with precedent. I mean, we've been skirting this issue, I talked with the building department and part of the reason that we put the effort into doing the detached garages, they said if it's in the side yard, it's got to match, not negotiable. So anyway, I mean, if we're, if we're one-off deal only, if it only pertained to Dan's application, that'd be one thing, but this sets the standard going forward in the township. And.
So Rick, what would you recommend? We've heard Jared's opinion, what you recommend?
Well, you know, if we vote on it.
No, I'm just asking, would you recommend?
You personally? Probably, you know, brick skirt, four foot brick skirt and then vinyl up beyond that.
Can I chime in on the vinyl real quick? I have no vinyl in my house. I don't understand how that's a matching material. I don't have vinyl in my home.
Only reason I mentioned, Dan, if you've got aluminum trim, you know, aluminum siding gets as durable as what vinyl is. So I mean, it'd be your option if you wanted to put aluminum siding on.
I understand, I'm just saying if we're talking precedent and all that stuff, it's not a matching material. That's, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just trying to state a fact.
He said skirting, he said.
Yeah, skirting.
But what sides of the building?
Well, definitely the, it'd be the south side. And it probably makes sense that the east side facing the house. And for the north side and west side, that could be, you know, whatever siding that was above the brick completely and then, you know, shielded from, I know you got a neighbor to your west that's splitting through the woods, right?
To the north more so. I mean, I can't even see their house. They're, they're over a berm, I cannot see their home.
Okay.
They're on the other side of the pond, that crater.
Yeah, that's north.
So that, I mean, putting brick up for those elevations, that'd be a waste of money?
Yeah, I mean, I've only got another week of being able to see their house too. You know, like, it disappears for whatever, the whole season where there's leaves on the trees.
So you tried to brick all the way up the front?
No, no, that would be Dan's option if you wanted to do that. I think that may be overkill. You know, four foot brick skirt, east and south elevations. And then the rubber material that Dan chose to take and go above the brick, that could be on the west and north elevations.
Color of the mash building?
Old brick.
I know.
Well, only reason I'm mentioning that is because his house is painted, is painted white already. So requiring him to go off brick all the way up, he's already got brick trim. You've got, you have Gable Ensign and the front elevation that are currently siding?
On my current, are you talking my existing home?
Yeah, you're just.
Yes, vinyl.
Okay.
Yes.
So that would be?
I did not mean vinyl, excuse me, aluminum. Everything's aluminum, there's no vinyl on my house.
Okay.
No, it's all original.
Either or aluminum or vinyl.
Yeah.
It's probably what, double four?
Not true.
Something like that, double four, double five. But, you know, the house being painted white, and if we were to suggest that, that eastern most elevation be brick all the way up and he would likely paint it to match the house anyway, I mean, it's, personally, I think it'd be overkill. I think it'd be putting too much of a condition on the, unreasonable condition of approval.
Help me out here, the, on the house, it's a, he looks to me just looking at the picture and he made a comment about, I was looking at the picture a little time.
Sure.
The garage itself is a brick?
Yes.
All the way up? Two feet?
Can I see the picture? I mean, I don't know, honestly.
Yes, that is brick.
Okay.
That is hard to tell from there. That is brick.
For the main part of the home, the brick goes up to the others? That is all brick on the face.
Yes.
This is not. That's an alternate material up in that peak area. It's, it looks like a stucco, it's not stucco, but it has that appearance. But yes, the rest of the face, there is brick. All right, so that light above the door, has brick around it?
Correct.
The light it looks like?
Correct.
Okay, so that's brick. And then as I go further to the right, to the right most part of the home, in front of it is the brick.
Yes, over the bay is metal.
Okay. And so then if I looked at the garage to the right, only a part way, it's not matching, it's not the same. Would I be correct in that assumption?
Can you state that question one more time, please?
Garage to the right.
The garage to the right. I don't know what that means.
Your building, I'm sorry.
Okay, the accessory building proposed here, okay.
Yes.
To the right.
I think we were talking, some people were talking about, I think you were talking about psycho metal.
Yes.
People were talking about going halfway. And I'm wondering if it should go like the house, the front only, the sides and rear would be side?
I mean, again, it could, I just don't think it's going to, just going to take away from the whole scheme we are looking to accomplish to make it look better.
When I drive by, if I park at the clusters placed across you.
Yeah.
I'll see something that is all brick. And I'll see what you have on the sides, maybe here, you know? Well, I looked at the other way, now I see the other nation, Rick.
No.
But then, the garage.
Yeah. So is there no relevancy to the, so is that 20 grand that I'm investing just a complete waste of money, it sounds like, with the privacy screen? I know, I'm just saying like in.
Those are just different questions people are asking.
Sure, okay.
Yet everybody, if there will be a motion, we will all. Is anyone allowed to ask a question?
There is a vote here in there.
What's going to be most visible as we go?
We didn't open it up.
Proceed, really, we need to stop and.
Well, you can finish this exchange.
Okay. Just a point of clarification, what's going to be most visible for 32 mile road is the 60 foot long wall that's going to be on the southern, southern elevation. The entrance facing west is going to be basically parallel with this existing attached garage. And when you drive past the house right now, you don't see that elevation. So.
Which side are you talking about?
Talking about the south side because Dan's.
The south side is the front.
So, the south side.
Facing 32 mile road.
Right, and then Dan plans on building the accessory building, that southern elevation parallel with the south side of his house. So that's what's most visible.
So can you say what is going to be visible and what is not visible?
The, the south side long wall, 60 foot long wall is going to be for sure the most visible. So, and Ed was talking about, you know, matching the west, excuse me, the east entrance to the accessory building to match the west entrance to Dan's existing attached garage.
I'm talking the garage, period. The front of the garage.
Okay, well, the garage is attached, so I mean, it basically was.
This, I'm sorry, I say garage, I really mean this building is what I'm talking about.
Right, okay.
Asking you if that would be better suited to be brick as the house is mostly all brick.
It's going to face the house though.
It's not going to.
It's going to face the.
Oh, it's turned the other way.
It's not going to be visible.
Yeah, the garage doors are.
Be perpendicular to 32 mile road. The garage doors are going to be facing east.
East.
Correct.
That's what the long piece is going to be facing 32.
I got it.
I think I have a responsibility to make a note about precedent, which is that the precedent you set with a motion is highly dependent on how the motion is tailored. So, you know, this building has a certain setback and not every building that you're going to deal with has that same setback. So if you're not looking to set precedent with this motion, you can always incorporate the setback into the motion as a rationale for the decision that you're making. And that would, that would avoid the precedent saying dilemma for buildings that are substantially closer to the street.
Thank you. Question for Dan. Okay, with six, 16 foot sidewall and 60 foot long facing 32 mile road, you could potentially do some evergreen screening. So, but, but what is still going to remain, the big difference in comparison, what's going to remain is the difference in your roof line compared to your existing house. Do you have any flexibility on doing a shingle roof on that to make it?
I mean, I don't, I don't want to, it's a metal structure. I would prefer, much, much prefer not to go that route.
Is the color of the metal, are those the same color?
It is, yes. It's charcoal, it'll be charcoal and charcoal, basically.
Should open the public hearing at some point yet.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion by Tremblay to open the public hearing. Second move by Tom Chapman.
We're done drilling, you know?
No, thank you. I, I don't want to come across as disrespectful if I have, I apologize, I'm not trying to be, just so you guys know.
I didn't do it.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
All in favor of opening the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Paulus Nae?
Page 20.
Okay.
I just have a quick question.
You can go up, go up here and speak. Name, address?
Andrew Harlow, Kading, 11901, Kading Road. I was just wondering, since he's 300 feet back, could you even tell the difference between the brick and the metal siding at 300 feet? That's the only question I really had. I don't think it's possible, but maybe.
Especially since it's painted white ahead of time.
Okay. Anyone else? Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by.
Page 22.
Page 22, second move by Mike Tremblay. Page 22. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, Nae? Motion carries. So a lot of that discussion that we just had, we would normally have now.
I got a habit of jumping the gun.
Got all the information out to the lead.
In his response to Andy's comment, you know, even 300 feet back, we're always going to know it's going to be a whole open versus an accepted, you know, conventional construction building. Some of the cues are just very, very obvious. So, I'm not saying that, you know, that grading weight all, it's just that it's obvious that the construction is different. So following what Joe said, if we were to consider this, we would take and need to narrowly craft a motion with, asking the applicant for stipulations he may be willing to consider to make his building less visible, 32 mile road. Do I have that correct?
May I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
That rather than ask the applicant, that whoever makes the motion, put what their requirements are for the applicant. And then after the motion is made and seconded, they ask the applicant if he can.
I'm not sure how to take him, words meant that one way. You got a good feel for how to do it?
I guess I have a question now, he's already putting in 40 trees, I mean, we're saying that's not enough.
No, that's not what I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting whoever makes the motion, which I'm presuming you might want to make the motion maybe?
Yeah, I could do that.
And then that part of the stipulations of the approval would include things that would make this not real easy to set a precedent.
Right.
Then I'll let you determine what that is and if I have anything to add, I'll ask if you're willing to add it.
No, I'm sure you will. Steve's not one of my areas of expertise.
I just don't want to make all the motions. Making motions, Bill's captain's.
Making motions goes captain's.
Just give him a couple minutes, pencil it down.
Alright, well, if there's no more discussion, I would move to make a motion. So I would make a motion that we recommend the approval of special land use for an accessory building in the side yard. Front yard. Based on the following reasons. This parcel is located in R-one district. This parcel is greater than ten acres. The setback of this proposed accessory building is three hundred and forty feet from the road. In that this is due to the fact that the applicant's rear yard is both partial wetlands along with the location of the septic system in the east part of the rear yard. And so, with that, it would be conditional upon the planting of forty-seven-foot spruce trees or equivalent. And contingent upon a complementing, complimentary facade of white sidewalls and charcoal roofs to the rest of the home.
Can I have one more other reason to put it in the front yard would be the existing topography of the rear yard too?
Yeah, I thought I covered that, but the wetlands piece, but yeah, I'm open to.
It's not only wetlands, it's also the slopes.
I'd like to add one more Dana, which would be the existing topography of the rear yard.
Joe, do we have the state, since we don't have real accurate drawings on the building heights and the setbacks?
I wouldn't specify what, what your minimum setback from the side, lot lines.
From the side?
Yeah.
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet setback from side yard? Do we need to say anything about the height or no?
We know what the height is.
I would say minimum twelve feet, 'cause if he puts it further than.
That's not a problem.
I'll, I'll second the motion. What?
I was just gonna ask Joe prior to the segment, if he had any other suggestions to help avoid precedent, or is the ship locked at dock?
I'll withdraw my second until I hear that.
Well, no, we can discuss it with a second, that's fine. 'Cause we moved to discussion after we seconded motion, so. I do think the setback, you cited the district and size of the property and the reasons that it can't be located elsewhere. I, I think that you've also conditioned it on planting of those trees that he's talked about planting. So, I, I don't think that there's necessarily another item that you need to put in there. I think you've, you've got the, the reasons that you're okay with this particular.
Did the motion say where the trees would be located?
It did not.
Can we, can we just to include that they would be shielding the building from thirty-two mile road?
Can I help a little, just with, 'cause like, so there's the existing twelve that are already in there. The addition, the twenty-eight that are on their way right now, they will be staggered in another row with what's already there, so. Like, the initial start to the forty is already in place, it's just going to add to what's already, the privacy screen that's already started.
So I would have moved, I would amend the motion to state that the tree should be planted in a way that helps shield the view of the accessory building. From thirty-two mile road.
I'll second the amendment motion.
Yeah, I knew the idea.
I have a question.
Yes.
Instead of adding it to the end, can I put it where the tree part of the.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
For everyone, can you read what you have recorded as the motion?
Tough act, I'm a little.
Jared does a great job. Give him a chance to correct it and others to perhaps understand that.
Okay, well, I've got some shorthand in here, so. Motion by Jared Vincent to recommend to the board to approve a special land use for a side yard.
Front.
I'm sorry, I did write side and cross it out. For an accessory in the front yard based on.
R-one district.
There was something else I thought you said.
R-one district.
Yeah, what I.
Property is in the R-one district, greater than ten acres.
The property, yeah, the property is in the R-one district.
Over ten acres?
Yeah, also greater than ten acres and three hundred and forty feet from the road. And this is due to the fact that in the rear, there are wetlands and the existing topography of the rear yard, also the septic.
Septic, the tile in the rear yard.
Septic tile, I mean, that is, and the rear yard, the conditions of planting of the forty, which I think is very maybe twenty-eight.
Yeah, forty total.
Forty total, to help shield the building from thirty-two mile road. And contingent on a complimentary facade of white and charcoal, minimum of twelve foot setback from the side yard.
Charcoal roof.
Charcoal roof and white side.
And white side.
Very good. Okay, Dana, I have a, I have a question. You stated three hundred and forty feet, and in there, he says roughly three hundred and thirty feet. I don't wanna hamstring him or.
Thank you.
Go back too far and have to cut off the building.
No, this is, he just stated that the existing building, is it the accessory building?
It's accessory building based off of, I mean, I just have a lot, line drawn on Onyx that I'm looking at. I don't know, is three thirty specified exactly in that motion?
He said three forty, that's why I wanna clarify. 'Cause if you push it too back too far, you have to change the dimensions of it.
Why don't we say in the neighborhood of three thirty?
Right, thank you.
Approximately three thirty.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I'm gonna go as, like I said, as far back as I can without starting to fall into a hole.
Dana, you amend the motion to be.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Three thirty. I'll amend that, amend the motion.
One, if I called it last time, any questions to understand? Okay, will you call the roll?
Kent?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Hacks.
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Thank you all.
This is a recommendation to the board, in roughly two weeks, you can get the date from Dana, and they will actually do the final approval.
Okay, thank you.
Halfway there.
I have a card, we're good.
Bedtime.
My kids are just as excited as me, so.
Mr. Chapman, can I?
I'll bring it up. Yeah, we don't need those. But it's a good lead in. You guys approved the agenda?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, and this is at the requesting board, the trustee. Under new business eleven, it's, it's not under our purview to review, but they've asked for our input because the last time this item came to the township, the planning commission was requested to provide it. So what we have, I just list the topic and then I'll explain it further when we get to that, but it involves, we have one liquor license left in the township, and we have a interested party that would like to apply for it. And the board is asking for an opinion from us. But it's not, it's not binding in any way, 'cause it's really not our purview, but they just wanna use us as the sub board. And we'll talk more about the eleven, the D applicants that's here today, and then I can elaborate to what we, what we discussed, some of the concerns and positives.
Okay, no one placing on which item?
Eleven.
A.
New business.
Okay, second. I'll second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, an A, motion carries. Okay, Joe, I think item D, study D, that's something you are wanting to discuss.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing for item D, the amendment to ordinance one sixty-one regarding solar.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, an A.
Motion carries.
Seven.
Okay.
Okay. We have a public. Yep. I'm just looking forward to it. Giving up the public. Okay, so this one, I just captured a little bit of it, it's regarding the solar and the one to four width to depth ratio.
Well, actually, we only open the public hearing on the solar for now. The other one is a separate.
Okay.
There's two different.
Okay, and having to ordinance number one sixty-one regarding solar, so if anybody wants to talk on that, you're not able to do that. See, no one interested.
I think we're closed.
Second. Motion to close by.
Eight thirty-eight.
Yep. And seconded by Tremblay. Aye. At eight thirty-eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to make a recommendation to the board to adopt the change to ordinance one sixty-one regarding solar as presented.
Motion by Tremblay, seconded by Andy. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 A. Motion carries. Okay, now we have the one to four width to depth ratio.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing on the amendment to ordinance one sixty-one regarding the width to depth ratio.
I'll second. Tremblay, seconded by Godman. Eight thirty-nine.
Anyone wanna talk?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
I make a motion to close the public hearing at eight forty regarding the. No one, no one, no one's interested.
Just wanted to double check, anyone want to speak on this thing?
I know which topics they wanna talk on. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on the change to ordinance one sixty-one regarding the one to four width to depth ratio.
Second. Tremblay, seconded by Chapman, and then you four.
I'll make a recommendation to, I'll make a motion to make a recommendation to the board to adopt the change to ordinance one sixty-one regarding the one to four width to depth ratio as presented.
I'll second it. Motion by Tremblay, seconded by Cupids. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Anything under number eight reviews? Hearing none. Number nine, communication. Anyone? Okay, moving on to number ten, unfinished business, tobacco. Joe, you have something on that?
I do. Discussed this last time briefly. Basically, what we have is a setup in our ordinance that calls out tobacco shops as a specific use. And permits them as a special land use in the C-three district, which of course, we don't have on our map at the moment. And as we discussed last time, we have uses in the C-two district that are selling the same products that the tobacco shops sell. Just as part of a broader business. These are not on-premises smoking establishments, they're retail operations, they sell stuff. It's not the same thing as like a hookah bar or cigar bar or something like that. They're really, so we were talking about permitting them in the C-two district. And there were really two ways to do that, one is by specifically listing tobacco shops in the C-two district. And the other would be by removing tobacco shops from the list of special land uses in C-three and just letting them fade into other retail uses. I did look at a lot of other ordinances, 'cause one of the things that was asked of me last time is, can you find any special conditions that are placed on these uses in other ordinance? And the, the short answer to that is, I could not find another ordinance that had specific conditions that applied to tobacco shops. A lot of what you would put in an ordinance, like eighteen over and that kind of thing, that's all covered in state law. So, again, other ordinances list these in a huge variety of ways, some simply don't list them at all, and they're just considered retail. Others make them a special land use, others make them, list them separately as a permitted use, they're, they're really handled just in a huge variety of ways from community to community. So it's a matter of what, as a community, your preference is for this use, do you just want it to be considered retail? Because that's a subtractive amendment that we can make to the C-three district where we simply don't list tobacco shops anymore, and by virtue of not being listed separately, they're just retail. They, they would be lumped in with all other retail. Or we could list them separately as their own use in the C-two district. It's really, it doesn't make that much of a difference practically. But if you want to have them called out specifically, for whatever reason, we would list them separately.
Joe, in your experience of you had, it says, you said include green ordinances that treat them as their own use with varying levels of restriction, varying levels of restriction meaning?
Meaning sometimes they're a special land use and sometimes they're not.
So, those, those that have a special land, do you have any experience with what the concerns might be?
I haven't really ever had it come up.
Because in today's environment, I mean, we have, things have changed with respect to what's allowed and not allowed in our current society.
Right.
This is probably in a whole ordinance.
In the same way that tattoo shops were once very frequently made special land uses and. Now, I mean, who under twenty-five doesn't have a tattoo, you know, well, between sixteen and twenty-five, I would say.
Why are fifty?
I mean, it's just.
My neighbors in the south have tattoos and pot. My neighbors in the south have tattoos and pot.
So Joe, when you, when you talk about, I didn't look it up in the dictionary. How would you describe what a tobacconist is in general?
I mean, they sell primarily tobacco products and products that are related to the consumption of tobacco. That's really.
Can I?
Such as pipes?
They can't sell marijuana because that's prohibited. Bruce.
Mr. Uppus, we have someone here that has put in an application for a tobacconist, tobacco shop. He's waiting and he's interested. I don't know if you have any questions for him. He's currently the owner of a tobacco store. I don't know if it's appropriate for me if he's.
I have a question, though. How can he put an application in when we don't have any C3 district?
He put in an application, how did we do that, Joe?
Oh, I think he filled out a special land use application, but of course, we don't have the opportunity for it, so.
So there's no existing application?
Yeah, we don't have a process.
It ought to have been accepted. Because we don't allow, we don't have a C3 district. We don't have any allowance for it.
But there is tobacco, you're right, you're right.
You mean, if it's just a pure tobacconist, it shouldn't have been accepted?
Yeah, well, it really wasn't. I'm holding it.
Yeah, it hasn't been processed.
Yeah, it hasn't been processed.
It's been accepted but unprocessed.
Do you really see any reason to single them out? Since you have a party store that sells that, you have grocery stores that sell cigarettes. I mean, is there any?
Washington Township has one.
Yeah, is there any reason, though, to?
Have something special.
Have something special? Why can't they just be regular retail?
What would be the concerns that we would have?
I mean, it centers on the product. I mean, that's really, you know, it's a regulated product. That's all.
It's sold only to people over a certain age.
But again, it's already at the state level, so.
So if they sold it to a minor, they'd be in trouble anyway because of the state.
Right, exactly. They lose their license to operate and they're done. So.
There's really no other standards that you would put on it. I mean, the products can be sold in other venues, just as much as they can be sold.
So it doesn't make sense.
At a dedicated store, so. It's really just, it's kind of isolating the use because it's dedicated to sales of that product, basically, as opposed to part of a larger product mix.
So what districts do we allow retail? Is that C2?
Yeah, C2, well, C1 will allow retail as well, and of course, C3.
But if we wanted to, we could propose that it be allowed in the C2 district, which would create an opportunity for someone to do that.
That's right, yeah. If you wanted it listed separately, you could put it in the C2.
Or not listed at all, which would allow it anywhere, right?
Anywhere.
Retail, that would be fine. But Fiddler's Cove is C2, right? Fiddler's Cove is C2.
Doesn't appear like, you know, we can identify any obvious concerns. You know, I think when we discussed SLU, the prior meeting, because we were a bit less certain than what we currently are. By having it as a special land use, the application would be as what, $2,000? So, we're trying to take and promote commerce in the community. And by the SLU requirement, we're kind of driving commerce away.
Similar, similar.
Let me ask a question of the entire commission. Normally, I would have expected that conversation from, I'm not sure who it is, but would have occurred under item number six called conduct. How you talking, they want to bring up, not only talking about a specific topic? Anyone have a problem with not allowing, or allowing this gentleman to speak? I assume it's a gentleman.
No, through the back. Forward, please. They sell twisted tea there.
Amen, twisted tea hoodie. Matthew, we own the liquor store, obviously, on the corner of Van Dyke. We're proposing to open a vape shop or a tobacconist shop across the street. I think it would be more convenient for people across the street as we, we're a staple, in my opinion, to the community around us. You know, we enjoy serving our customers. We enjoy serving our people, you know. We enjoy going to the shows, doing charity work, everything, just taking care of everybody. We want to open another business. We want to expand as much as possible and take care of much, as much as possible, take care of as much people as possible as we can. It's obviously a C3 to be a retail store. And a C2 obviously is prohibited because you have to, it's an open license, so you can smoke in there. We just want to be a retail store to sell tobacco or tobacco products. As we already sell them in our store, I think it would be more convenient for us to sell them in a store across the street because we, you know, where there's limited space for us. It's a liquor store. We sell beer, wine, and liquor. We can't add rolling tobacco or tubes and cigarettes, like all of that sort, and all the other tobacco items. We would like to open up a store across the street because it would be more convenient to customers. They could just, as in the trailer park or, you know, Chase Farms or the store, or the houses behind us, as they could just walk or drive right to the tobacco shop instead of going all the way over on 31, or a little further if I'm not mistaken by McDonald's. So it would be more convenient for our customers. And we brought it up multiple times as we sent an application and it's still pending. And we would like to know if we would be able to go upon that and get approved for that and open that up as soon as possible.
My question is, okay, you've got the party store, you sell.
Yes, miss.
Tobacco products, you sell food.
Yes, miss.
What does this store sell? Just tobacco products?
Yeah, like tobacco, like everything. I mean, you could say tubes, rolling tobacco, even more vapes. We can expand on our vape section, everything of the tobacco sort that you could order. I mean, I'm limited on the use of, selling use of tobacco because I'm obviously a filled liquor store. I have just a lot of liquor. My shelves are all filled. I have, of tobacco right now, all I have is the vapes. The cigarettes, that's all I carry as of right now. And I have customers that come in and ask me if I can carry rolling tobacco, you know, cigarette rollers, tubes, and it's just not possible for me because I have such limited space. I think it would be very convenient for us to expand across the street and be able to open a tobacco shop so we could put everything in there and serve the community even more as a whole. And, you know, cigarettes are obviously flying in price. We can make them save some money and take care of our customers as well on that sort. And have tobacco so they can roll their own tobacco and other needs, if possible, that we could carry.
I just didn't know if there were going to be other products, like the food, I mean, you know.
No.
Other things sold in there.
Because in a tobacco shop, we've experienced it actually before, me and my brother. We owned one over on 21 in Auburn. And it got shut, unfortunately, we shut down because of COVID. But we've owned one before and we know the restrictions. It was a C2 license, so it was a hookah bar. And we know just how to run it and everything. We need to carry in there. Nothing wrong and you can't, it's not an open drink, obviously not an open bar, so you can't bring your own drinks in there and stuff or whatever it is. So it's going to be a retail store, so it would be no selling of food, alcohol, none of that sort, unless there are some stores that are able to sell beer and wine off the license when you can incorporate it with their.
People would go in there and buy the product and then leave.
Yes, yes, miss. Yes, miss. There's nothing of that sort where you could be in there and speak, loiter, anything, nothing in there.
Okay.
That gives us an idea of the way you would approach it.
Yes, sir.
Probably others as well.
Yes, sir.
Any final questions before we go back to Joe?
Yeah, I have a question. It says smoking and vaping venues, would that be, does that mean smoking in the establishments?
Yeah, that's right, exactly. So those would continue to be listed in the C3 district as a separate.
As a, as a special land use in C3.
Right, exactly.
But what we would move is tobacco shops and sales of smoking and vaping-related paraphernalia.
That's right.
Perhaps as a permitted use in C2.
Right.
I would ask, if you don't mind, could me ask Joe to come back to the next meeting with some language to make the changes, proposed change to ordinance 161 to allow tobacco shops and the sales of smoking, vaping-related paraphernalia in the C2 district. And smoking, vaping venues remain as a special land use in the C3 district. Is that okay?
That's fine.
So does that mean it would just be considered regular retail in the C2?
In the C2, they could, they could do the tobacco shop, the sale of smoking, vaping, paraphernalia.
If you only want to move it to the C2, I have to list it as a special use.
Yeah, that's what I would prefer.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be as a permitted use, right?
Permitted use in the C2 district.
Okay.
And then C3 would still include the smoking venues as a special use.
Okay.
Does that answer one question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
We're not done yet.
Uh-oh.
It takes, it takes time.
I'm back.
This is like step one.
We're proposing making changes that would allow you to do what you might do.
Yes, sir.
Without paying any fees.
No problem. Appreciate you guys.
And then, he wouldn't have to apply for anything, right? He could just, as a permitted use, there's no business license to get it. It's through the state, whatever else.
Definitely before opening, make sure it's all set. Don't start next week.
I know. I'm waiting on approval. Once we're approved, we can start moving in and doing stuff and taking care of everything.
Into late summer.
I know.
If everything goes right.
Thank you. It's all right. We can wait. As long as we're able to open it and take care of our customers and serve our community, we'd be more than happy.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Matthew, yeah, thank you.
Before we go to that, I've got kind of like a sidebar. It's also regarding the C2 district. You know, we do have multiple vacancies in Fiddler's Cove. And I wonder if we could be prudent to take another look at permitted uses in the C2 district, ideally to, I'm not sure how recently the uses is, were benchmarked to similar-sized municipalities. See if we got some uses that we may be able to add with low risk of consequence that may make our commercial district more desirable for tenants.
Can we address that under new business discussion?
I think he raises an interesting question. What I would do is have that under new business next month.
Yeah, yeah. I think we could do that.
I think we can do that. But my question to you is, have you gotten feedback that we don't have businesses in that particular location because of that issue? Because I don't think, I don't agree with that's why we.
May not be, but I mean, the deal is if there were uses that could be added that, you know, were very obvious that they could be added and should be added. I mean, it's just another opportunity for someone to take and come in and do a permitted use without having to.
But you don't have anyone knocking on the door and saying, hey, you don't permit this. I'd like to come here. Right, you don't have that.
Like to see full occupancy over there.
Given that you don't have an example of someone coming.
No, I agree, I do not. Just trying to, you know, think outside the box a bit.
Because we have had several, bro, recently with the banquet hall and now the tobacconist.
Yeah.
Isn't that what people want to go and have the doggy daycare? And that, yeah, but that can't go there. Not in the shopping center.
Okay, I'd like to move on to the agenda, item 10B. Resume the conversation, I think this is final, and more. Harlow's conditional rezoning is the topic. Andrew?
Andrew Harlow, Kading, 11901. All right, so we started off with an eight-plex apartment building. Then we had a meeting and kind of came up with a duplex idea, which didn't work out as well. So now I'm just going back to the apartments because if I rezoned to the three lots, I'll end up rezoning into R1 and I'll just be handcuffing myself. So I just decided to go with the eight-apartment complex as an option because it's the best transitional zoning we have, I think. Is what I, is my opinion.
So what is it you're currently requesting, Andy?
The original eight-unit apartment complex.
That's RM2, I believe. Sorry, Joe.
RM2, I believe.
When you bought the property?
Mm-hmm.
Zone commercial?
Yes, sir.
How long ago was that?
Probably a year and a half, two years.
A year and a half, the business conditions were close to what they are today.
Yep.
And you made a choice to buy, knowing the zoning.
Right, positively.
Now you're asking us to make a change.
Right, well, the main reason I started is because I live on Kading Street and I've talked to a lot of the neighbors and not many of us really prefer a strip mall at the end of our street. But at this point, I'm just willing to put a sign up and see who is willing to come and build something or whatever I can get in there because obviously, I've been trying to work and nothing's working. So I might as well just get shut down on my original idea, is the way I'm looking at it.
Not saying that, I'm just trying to understand.
No, I'm just saying.
So if I vote against which eventually comes, I don't want to feel bad. Buys you, you can develop today, commercial, doesn't have to be a strip mall. You have to find.
It's just got to be, yeah, like a 10,000 square foot retail or 5,000.
Find the guy next door and get him to go with you or sell it to you, or you sell it to him.
He's not looking to develop that land anytime soon. I've spoke with him. It's just a private investor. It's one of my buddy's friends.
Not a construction company?
It's Mondo Group, but it's, yeah, it's one of my, my buddy works with him in his shop. They share a shop, so I've talked with him. Because I tried to buy the land behind my house, actually, from him also. Because that way I could extend the property and not have to worry about someone moving in later.
So what is the request? Because when I'm looking at the application, it says existing zoning C1 doesn't have a proposal beyond the application, so. So what do we, what is the request here?
Well, I've come back to just, I talked to Dana and she just let me know that I couldn't. Once, if we went with the three lots, it would just get turned into R1 zoning and then I would just be handcuffed at that point to three lots.
I didn't use the word handcuff.
No, I said this. I'm just saying, so it's not worth me to put it into R1 in just the three little lots where I could put a big building in.
R1 is like two acre, two and a half acre parcel, so.
Well, we're, we're looking at a contractual zoning is what it would end up being ultimately, I believe.
Yeah, contractual zoning would be an agreement between the developer and the township for that piece of property.
Right. Whereas I just.
Not what you're looking for.
No, not at this point. I mean, I paid the money for the zoning, rezoning. So if I'm paying the money for the rezoning, I might as well go for the rezoning, not the whatever I can do thing, you know what I mean, I guess.
That's, the conditional rezoning, maybe I didn't explain it very well to him. But as far as the conditional rezoning, can you give him the definition of?
Yeah, conditional and contractual zoning means that we agree on the conditions that would be used to develop that property.
Right.
So if we agreed on three building, three parcel, it would be the contractual zoning, whatever other elements there would be to that.
Yeah, but there's not like a time limit where it would refer back to C1 is, I guess, my problem. Like, because I'll be stuck with the new contract and I won't be able to put a commercial building in. I, I ultimately want, I mean, at this point, I'm ultimately just going to go for a commercial building, put a sign up, just because it's what everyone wants here, apparently. I just didn't like it because I lived on the street and I was trying to get away from the Warren feel. But I guess that's what everyone wants here, so that's what I'm going to try to do.
I don't know if that's what everybody wants here. I think we were willing to discuss doing residential there.
Yeah, but I, three units isn't going to like be, it wouldn't work. And that's why we had a group meeting and we came up with the duplexes. But obviously, that didn't work out, that nobody liked that idea after the meeting. So I just decided to go back with the original eight units that I've proposed.
I think you're, the last time you were here with the three duplexes, it wasn't that we were against that, it was, there wasn't contractual language with that. So if it was rezoned, there were limitations, so it would be built on that.
But they had, they had said that they weren't in upper the six units because of the, whatever Rick's head said, because of the density, is what it came down to, so. But I can have a 10,000 square foot unit and have five retail spaces, density's going to be greater, so I don't understand it, but that's what it is. That's from what I'm seeing.
Yeah, you open up, that's kind of, you know, having.
Any on that chair?
There might be an interested party that wants to talk. You don't have an obligation.
Do they have to be within the 300-foot rent room of?
The ones who get notified, but.
Yeah, but those are the ones that would be here complaining, right? If I had a problem, don't, wouldn't you think? Well, I was here at the meeting when they were doing the other one, and this room was full, because of complaints. And then, I mean, I didn't have anybody show up besides this one lady that's, you know, always complaining, so I don't know.
I, I think after the work group, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he seems frustrated that, that after the work group, it still wasn't resolved.
Yeah. I spent the money to get everything together and try to make it.
I designed to get something that will work.
Right. That might work.
Is willing to do, and perhaps it will work. And just speaking, you know, he's, he's saying, no, not right.
And that's, that's fine. It was a, a group that day, we just met and talked, and I understand how it goes. It's, no one's agreed to anything on the group, you know what I mean?
As far as this gentleman being here to discuss this, would we not have to have public notification? You know, we've already gone through that.
We've done the hearing.
We've postponed this for any time.
Yeah.
Specifically on the agenda.
You've already had the public hearing.
We, we did the public hearing already, so.
You're under no obligation to do anything.
You're under no obligation to do it. If you want to, you could open up.
But, I mean, I think it's a fair question. Housing there, do we want commercial?
Mr. Harlow is proposing a change from C1 to RM3.
Right. Let's commercial to residential. I can go to RM. Uh, what was it, Joe, that we could get away with eight units?
It's for C1 to RM3. No other conditions?
Yeah.
If you do contractual zoning, you don't change underlying zoning, you just have a contractual agreement between you, what's going to go there, what's it look like. You kind of box it in the best you can, so that.
That way no precedents are set.
With my history on the planning commission, when I was younger and more naive, we, I used to watch this commission, and I was chair for one of them, is we approve a pure rezoning based on your actual design that looks really good, or you agree that they can do whatever's allowed.
Right. No, I understand.
So you get something, we, we ended up with something a lot different, and I said that will never happen if I have any influence yet. If you just do a pure rezoning, is, they're allowed to do whatever's allowed in that rezoning.
So what you're saying is if he came back with, um, and said, had a contractual, um, plan, let's say the three duplexes, and that's what he contracted to build, and the zoning would say the same as what it already is, and we would allow that.
The zoning would change. The zoning would change, it would just change with restrictions, it would be. So instead of doing the whatever the maximum number of units is, you would be restricted to the six.
So if we go to RM3, but then we wouldn't allow nine, but we would allow six?
Right, exactly.
Which I believe would to RM2.
You might move it down to RM2 or something, because it's.
Yeah, RM2, yeah, you could change it.
Because you'd use six units under RM2.
But what, what the planning commission needs to be concerned about is, is if you agree to something like that, what's the density that you're allowing, and what, what can you expect other people to do in that zone? And we, we did reject someone recently with less density than us. So it's important to know.
And as I recall, there was quite a bit of public participation. You know, this particular one has kind of lost the limelight of the agenda, you know, the public hearing and so on.
It's because it keeps getting kicked down the road, that's why.
We were allowing the applicant to consider the concerns of the planning commission, and the applicant has decided to not do that. He's going back to his original application, C1 to RM3.
Well, that's because I kind of already knew, I didn't have an option at the RM2, you know, because you guys shot it down last meeting, so I wasn't going to come back with that. I might as well go with my eight unit and, and just go with that, I guess, is what I'm coming down to.
All the times that this has been postponed, it's been the same issue of density.
Uh-huh.
And every time you've had workshops, meetings, every time you've come back, I've seen nothing.
Well, I get denser from the building.
Or whatever, so.
I went from eight units to six units.
Personally, I don't like the density, so I wouldn't accept it. So I don't know. Probably by y'all's.
As a voter, I, I would not be in favor of the residential there. The master plan calls for, um, different development there, commercial, and no evidence shown that it cannot be developed as residential other than someone's opinion, but there's nothing to build there to make money. What do you want else to go? Personally, I still hang with commercial as I did on day one. I didn't speak very loud about it, but I've, I've not seen a reason other than a gentleman wants to do it. Personal opinion could be right, could be wrong, that's it. I'm just.
I could see housing, just not at this density that's proposed. Doesn't lie in there.
And changing the master plan to accommodate it. That's the part that I didn't think of.
Uh-huh.
I, uh, I understand the master plan says it's, it targets it says commercial, but with a fair number of empty commercial, uh, just at the door, I strongly would need more commercial. I would be in favor of a residential development there, if I understand something density concerns.
Yeah, I just, I don't like the density that's proposed, so.
Anyone else? Joe, would it be appropriate for us to go back to the beginning? Make this a public hearing, make this put out there, for people to come in and express like the same hell?
I don't, I don't, you've done it already, so I don't know what the utility of that would be at this point.
So all the people that have, um, an opinion on it, they have already expressed their concern, expressed their concern, and it's gone through multiple discussions, and there's no opportunity for them to discuss it again.
Can I make a motion?
Time for a motion.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to recommend the denial of rezoning of 70424 Van Dyke. The developer has not presented evidence.
Wait, you're making a recommendation to the board, correct?
Yep. That was a motion, yep. The developer has not presented evidence, the property cannot be developed or used as presently zoned. This change would not be consistent with the Bruce Township master plan to add a duplex multifamily, there's been so many different ones, development to a former commercial district, or adhere to the future land use plan, and would set a dangerous precedent. Water and sewer service would be essential to a multifamily development project on this site, which will not be available anytime in the near future. Granting a request for this zoning change would result in spot zoning, create a hardship for neighbors, two things we don't want.
I'll second it. Anyone have questions on the motion?
I would ask that you add a few more, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
It's inconsistent with the zoning of the strongy properties, residential properties, which are all within R1B.
Okay.
Yeah. Was there more, or was that?
I'm looking.
Well, the planning commission has already denied a request for contractual rezoning for that density.
For less, actually less.
Less density, that is at least two times less, uh, I can't read my own notes.
Two, two times less density in the proposal.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'd second the motion, so.
Any more discussion? Anyone have discussion for it, or Dana will call the roll? Anyone? Dana, would you call the roll?
Yes.
And a vote of yes is for denial. That's correct.
Rick Haggelson?
Yes.
Randy Cant?
Yes.
Tom Shetman?
Yes.
Andy Burnett? Mike Tremblay?
Yes.
Jared Vincent?
Yes.
Ed Cubus?
Yeah.
Hey, you have your answer.
All right. This has to go to the board. Mr. Harlow, so.
It goes to the board.
At six o'clock, two weeks from today.
Oh, I still have a shot.
You still have a shot.
Thank you, guys. You have a good one. Are we done with number 11?
10.
10.
5G.
5G. There are no updates on 5G this month. Number 11, new business?
Okay.
Good evening. Vic Stefanowski, Three Oaks Golf Center, um, 79363 Van Dyke in Bruce Township. Anyways, the reason I'm here, obviously, Mike knows really well, I'm obviously requesting, um, beer and wine license, which I did apply with the state, and, uh, the application has been filled. They came back in and saying that, obviously, we need to go to the township board, which I did, and, uh, uh, the supervisor stated that, um, I haven't really, um, made a good case, uh, for having it approved. So I have a few copies in here that goes back a few years. If Dana is, I only have seven, so you guys are welcome to that. Anyhow, I have invested, obviously, um, over a million dollars in Three Oaks and some change, which we're not going to get into that. And it was recommended that, um, it would be, um, obviously, some request was obviously from customers that we have as far as an adult beverage is concerned, we're not talking about liquor. All we're saying is beer and wine. And, um, what you have in front of you, this was, uh, proposed site proposal, which, as I said, the supervisor stated, I haven't made a good case about, um, getting it approved. So what you have in front of you is that, um, I did plan to put in, um, a banquet center, uh, amongst other things, which we, which you don't have there in front of you, that we did proceed to put in a miniature golf. I do have a proposal for another one, but we will see, uh, you know, what, how they, obviously, uh, what the request is and what we are able to do. But nonetheless, um, the liquor license, or beer and wine, adult beverage, if you will, um, which kind of upset me, because it's the first stage of the, I don't know who, if anybody's got the copy, which is from the liquor license, the first page needs to be, it's not, even if you voted on it, or you recommend, or the board, uh, decides to approve it or not, it's not a done deal, I have to go to the state. It's unfortunately, the township has only one, based on what I was told, and, um, that's the question, why, why is that, and who needs to follow up? Why are your guys allowed only to have one liquor license? Versus, your next-door neighbor has six available, to my understanding. In fact, one of the clerk had mentioned, because her spouse was hitting golf balls at the range, and he was making fun of it. If you had a liquor, if you were just a mile down the road, you could, uh, there's six available. I'm like, really? So anyhow, that's where we at, and, um.
Good question. Could you get one out of Elmont Township and take it to where you are now, or you want it to stay in the?
I couldn't, I couldn't answer you that question.
Oh, it's a county thing?
Yeah, it's a county thing.
Okay.
But you can get one in Macomb County. You have sales.
You have to buy it. Did you have to buy it?
He wouldn't have to buy one from just Bruce Township if he was allotted, is that?
All right.
He wouldn't have to buy it from Bruce Township if he was given permission?
If he didn't, if he could buy a liquor license within Macomb County from someone who has one and is not using it. But we have one available that we could give to someone.
Right. Okay. That was my question, okay.
And once you give it to someone, it becomes theirs. Enhances their, you know, value of the business.
Absolutely. And that's exactly why I'm doing it. But not to mention that, as you can see in the proposal, if you guys want to see a banquet center go up in here, or any other investment that I'm going to be making in the township, that's, that's why I'm asking for that.
I, I have a question. Isn't there a for-sale sign in front of this?
No. Not at this moment.
Was there a reservation?
There was, obviously.
It didn't last long.
Yeah, it was. It was.
One of the concerns brought about by the Bruce Township board was that this was for sale, and now it's not for sale. We asked, um, what was the future plan for this? So that was a concern. The other concern is you only have one, so if you give this one away, and another business comes in, like a restaurant or something, and they want, like, you don't have one to give anymore, they would have to go purchase it somewhere. So it's a tough call until they have one.
Well, it's not, actually. If I'm going to put a banquet center, it's not.
It's one, but.
It's, oh, I, I've actually, um.
I only ask for beer and wine, which I definitely. The last time I had this was 12 years ago.
Is that what you want, just beer and wine, or liquor also?
No, I'm, actually, I'm not fond of alcohol, to be honest with you.
Okay.
No, the answer is I'm not looking for liquor. That's a financial statement for Mike to take a look at, at the investment that obviously I've made in Three Oaks.
So you just want the beer and wine license?
Yeah. That's, that's my investment so far. So as you may have a restaurant coming in here, or somebody's requested, the question here is, who came first? So if the answer is he came first, then I would advise you to approve, to go ahead and vote, and obviously let him have it. But if I did, and I have filled out the paperwork with the, and actually, I'm waiting on, that's the first stage, versus fingerprinting, uh, obviously, background checks amongst other things from the state. You guys know how that works, I would assume. Uh, so I really got offended, actually. Uh, I love Mike. Tremblay, I'm not Tremblay, of course. I'm talking about Philbrook. I'm talking about Philbrook.
Send me Christmas cards anymore.
Yeah, yeah, well, listen, listen. It's just basically, um, what I'm coming from is, then, obviously, I've made quite a bit of investment, and I'm willing to do that even more. In fact, you know, there's a lot of things going on. As you, uh, Jared, had asked that it was for sale, uh, we can, I can go ahead and talk about that, if that's what you want to do, but primarily, as I mentioned in the meeting, equal opportunity owner, because there has been many, um, inputs or suggestions, stating that they could have bought the property, as you, I don't know how. bought the property, as you, I don't know how long you've been in the township, of course, but that place was rundown, obviously, in no shape, and it was vacant for a long time. So.
Definitely a much better place.
Finish your golf and drive to the range.
Is there a difference between liquor license and just beer and wine?
There is. But don't ask me.
Yeah, so the liquor control commission has a whole.
Just different classes, right?
Licenses, all different classes that they, that they provide, and beer and wine is one level of license, and then if you wanted to sell, you know, vodka and whiskey and stuff, you'd have to go up a level with this.
So we have one license for either?
I think the license counts, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, it counts for whether it's beer and wine or Class C.
Right, exactly.
So let me, let me, I think what the board was asking for was, what would you suggest the board look for? Or what should they be cautious of? What would be important in granting this liquor license?
Well, what happened to the license that was granted to the steakhouse in Romeo where the Mexican restaurant is now? Were they open for a short time?
In Romeo?
Didn't they take that license with them or what happened to that one?
What, Mexican restaurant in Romeo? You talking about La Fonda, Bruce Township?
Yeah, but there was a steak place or something else.
There was a steak place that was granted the license?
And didn't they take a look or something?
La Fonda serves liquor, so they may have, they may have sold the liquor license with the business.
To them, okay.
That's to the.
That's very common.
I thought that was a big steak.
But if you go out of business, you still have the license, you can tell the south to someone else.
Okay.
Are there conditions that could be put in place, Joe, to protect the township?
I don't think so. I think the township says.
Yes, with the license and the state grants it.
The state does the rest.
Comes their asset. So I can tell you what the board discussed, some board members discussed, is that it was for sale, so they were concerned that it's going to get sold. And then there was a concern by some that what is the long-term vision for this particular property? I mean, is it going to be renewed as it is? Make it, improve it, make it a more enhancing place for, valuable asset? Or is it, or is it just a play to get the license and enhance it and then sell it?
Well, my question is, if you get the license, as of right now, you don't have a building or a place to serve alcohol, do you? I'm not sure what you have there for buildings or.
I would suggest you come and visit us.
There is a small building there that you could put refrigerators in.
I mean, I didn't know what.
No, it's.
It was, I mean, eventually you said banquet hall or whatever, but if you got it right now, did you have a building, whatever, people came in?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
To shoot balls, whatever, is there a place to serve alcohol?
I mean, obviously, is, you can, I'm not an expert on that. Obviously, you can go to 7-Eleven and some of these places, obviously, they have it in a refrigerator and where you can buy a six pack or whatever.
No, no, I just meant, if you have the license, do you have a building or a place to serve it right now?
Yes, yeah, we do.
Well, the building is, you walk in, if I'm in the right place at the right time, I haven't been there in a while. I took my grandkids there to do an interview. And it's a small building, not suitable for more than, I'm going to say 10 people at one time. And when it was, when I went there, I didn't envision it as a place where you would sell liquor. A lot of kids would go in there, there are adults would go in there, but it's a driving range. Definitely get adults for that. I just didn't see that as being a place where you would sell liquor when it was coming about. It's not my sole decision, but I wouldn't like to see a place that sells liquor in that area on major road, gets a tremendous amount of traffic, and not somebody walk out of there after having a few pops. It's just my personal opinion, but.
Well, that's the same thing you'd have to worry about with a bar or restaurant or anything else, though, really.
That's true.
To La Fonda.
I mean, any, any place that sells liquor, I mean, you'd have that.
So I think with the, with the, with the board of trustees is looking for, what do you think we should aim, listen for?
Well, if you got this, did you plan on building your banquet hall or other things right away or not?
Right away, probably within a year or two.
Okay.
It's not going to be.
Initially, maybe golfers.
Yeah.
Or somebody drives by and sees the liquor sign and walks in. That's my last comment.
Joe, I think what to look out for is what prevents somebody from.
Can you get this so we can capture this, so we can, just the main issues that the board, that the planning commission.
So is the business that's asking for this solely dependent upon having it? Right, I think if it's going to.
Do they, do they need this?
Do they need it or they're liable to? And so I think then it's more sticky to stay where it is versus what prevents somebody from getting this and then ultimately selling it somewhere else in the county, because that's what.
That's the risk now.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so then it moves out of Bruce Township.
Well, I mean, I would feel better if there were immediate plans, if you got this or a banquet hall or some, some other place, restaurant.
Is this an immediate need or is this a future need? Is really the question, right? We are currently deficient in restaurants in Bruce Township.
Yes.
And combined with the available open space in Fiddler's Cove, you know, availability of the license in that location could make it more inviting to bring in a tenant there. And the infrastructure, at least part of it, currently exists.
So I guess my question would be, where else in the township would something like this, what a liquor license usable?
Fiddler's Cove.
Is that?
That's what you're saying, is that, and, and the way I would not give a break in a nutshell is that we do have available space at a restaurant if you go in there, and if we grant this license, then we don't have one for that business.
Is that the only place, I guess, is the question?
We have commercial that's not developed. We have commercial on 33 and McKay, we have, where Cloverfield, where Cloverfield subdivision is at? You know where Cloverfield is?
Yeah.
So just south of there, there's like six, seven acres, when we talked about gym place.
Gym place.
Across the street is another 12 acres, right across to the east, south of where the town, the. That's on C2 as well, correct? That's C2.
So that's all restaurant?
C2 is, yeah, restaurant would fit in both of those areas, but we have also some other areas that cost, they're not developed, probably won't be developed in the near future, but long-term, it could be, once that industrial district is pretty well built out, for sure.
Well, then the other question is, do we get another one at some point? Because it is based on population, and so there's.
Yeah, because this, this is a new one.
Right.
Because we had, I'm thinking 10 or 12 years ago.
Do you have to wait for the next census?
1500, it's one per 1500 people.
Yeah, but the new census is when we got it. Because we had given away our last one to this eight thousand, because that's not La Fonda's.
Does the census, what, is it maybe 10 years?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know if they update it based on ACS data, I don't know, more frequently than 10 years, but it's, it's one license for 1500 residents, so you have to add another 1500 people to get an extra license, basically.
Were you putting on 9,000, 9,000 to 10,000, somewhere around?
Ninety-five, seven hundred.
How old's that?
Ninety-five something.
Yeah, it's a 220, we were growing, we had people moving in, I'll take a look. So I heard a couple of things. One was Jared's, is this immediate or a future need dependent?
Yeah, and I guess maybe I phrase it as, is it, is it core to the business's viability?
I would say, at its current state, probably not.
Future state. So I mean, it enhances it, there's no question about that, and I think the question is, would these other elements that he's proposing come as a result of having this?
I'd feel better if there was plans for that in the works, banquet hall, restaurant, that kind of thing.
Well, if that was approved, of course, we have to probably file an application, then we could proceed. That's not approved. The only thing that I'm aware of that is approved is another miniature golf course, of course, with stipulation that I come back in here and present what was going in. So that, that was approved. So this was not put in front of, obviously, the commission board to approve it or to go to the board, but if we take the next step and approve it, then obviously, we wouldn't, there'd be stipulation to, to get the license.
Well, that's up to the regular board anyway, correct? They just wanted our opinion.
Yeah, so I would add one that, and this was a risk that the board identified, but I also reiterated that if you grant this license, that the applicant could sell the license.
Well, we could.
It's a risk, I know, Vic, you don't.
We could put it in writing that in state, I don't have a problem with that, I don't need the license personally. It would stay with the business.
Is that allowed?
I don't know. If you sell a business, you can, you can sell.
It has to be transferred over there?
Oh, yeah.
The license is transferred to the new owner, yeah.
But it has to.
Which I think is what happened with the problem, because they didn't apply for their license with us, and I don't think they want.
Can he agree to, to put in writing something saying that he'll leave it?
I don't know how that works. You know how that works? I think it depends for state.
Yeah, it's always.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how much that's worth to the, to the township, but the state is the one governing it.
Who would enforce that? I don't know what that. No, there's real. If you could sell your business, you don't have to sell the liquor license with it.
So they were interested in input?
Input, yeah.
Like a final vote and decision.
No.
So you, as a trustee, you think you've gotten enough input?
Yeah, I think we do, and I can take that forward. If there's any other concerns, do we should bring the board?
Last minute.
I'm just going to share it with the board. I mean, there's some board members that have, have an opinion on that, and I don't know if they can dissuade.
And they certainly can watch this.
Okay.
Thank you, Vic, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So I should go start there and see what it looks like right by?
So I think we're on item 12.
Great.
Joe, any additional comments?
I don't know.
Uh, I just want to state to the board that the physical health establishment, the name change and the special land use for a building greater than 5,000 feet was approved by the board, so. I want to let you know our perspective from the neighborhood, that, that, that's approved. Take back from the gymnastics place. Mike should call and say, let me move it in. So point being, some development going on in that C2 district. Pardon? So point being, some new development going on in C2, that's at 33 and McKay, correct? That's what we're looking at, yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, so we've covered 11, 12, 13.
I have a comment, I guess 13. After going through this book, looking at all the different zoning changes, we still need an update to the C2 where we said the special land use, the banquet hall, doesn't have to be in the freestanding building?
Yeah, you should get a fully updated, all the replacement pages and things.
And it hasn't.
Within the next couple of weeks.
I looked online the other day, it hasn't been corrected there either.
No, it's, it'll be online soon.
So, okay.
Yeah, we, we kind of bundled a bunch, we had like four months in a row where something got adopted.
A bunch of changes, okay.
Probably have a couple more.
Well, we're probably going to have a couple more, but we got to get them in there at some point, so we're just doing it now.
Do we update it up this month?
Yeah.
No, Joe, we're going to update the coordinates online and we'll get some pages for our book.
Yeah, exactly.
Better reflect the changes that have occurred. And then we, I know there's two more going to the board this month that we approved today.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Question, point of clarification, oh, I started to talk about earlier about the consideration of benchmarking as an example, additional permitted uses within C2, that's going to be an agenda item for next month's meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Are you going to bring any data that you have regarding that or?
Yeah, I mean, I can kind of give you some examples.
I mean, not a lot of, but, you know, anything that you see that's definitely way out of whack.
Sure, yeah.
Would that be for the all three of the commercial districts or just predominantly?
Say, I would say all three.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Well, C3, you don't have any, so.
I have one more comment. Connie, you made a comment as well, 36 Mile and Van Dyke, where the former dog room place was, we had somebody come in and do something. Yesterday or the day before, I noticed would appear to be some bigger equipment coming through there. I'm assuming there's, that would only be for the person behind. We did have somebody that wanted to talk about landscaping thing, I'm assuming that's not going. But there was somebody behind that they did a stock work order.
Where specifically are you talking about?
36 Mile and Van Dyke.
36.
The corner lot is where that dog room.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Behind there, I believe there was a stop work order that disappeared to go either from the road, Van Dyke, back there, or in the opposite direction. Is there still a stop work order there?
I need to ask on the, I.
Is it the southwest corner?
Southwest corner.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, I don't know if the board can.
Can I, can you check? Anything else in commission? Round number 14 is adjourned.
Is that motion to adjourn?
Second.
Another case?
I can take one.
I didn't ask for a comment, but discussion. Seconded by Connie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Person carries.
Is that 32?
32.
I think the people behind there are.
Can you?